Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, today, as we have remembered and honored a beloved member and leader in our community, we give you thanks for the men and women who have served and continue to serve our city as first responders. As we prepare for the National Day of Prayer, we acknowledge you in the center of our city's government tonight. We ask your blessing upon tonight's meeting. We ask that you grant your wisdom and direction to our elected officials, that they would have the courage to make the right decisions for every citizen of Los Banos. We ask that you help us to display the love toward one another that you have displayed toward us. May we all strive to live in unity and at peace with one another as we work toward a better Los Banos. I ask your blessing upon our elected officials, upon the leadership and staff of our city. We speak health to their bodies, peace and provision to their families, clarity to their minds, and strength to do what is right in the sight of God and the people of our city. Open our eyes to see the many things that we have in common, instead of focusing on the few things that divide us. As we look forward to new possibilities and a brighter future, lead us down the path of righteousness for your name's sake. May you receive all the praise, all of the glory, and all of the honor in our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Call the meeting in order at 6:01. Chief, if you want to lead it.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible).
I get a roll call, please? Here. And we have a quorum. Move on to item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Say good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Let's move into item five, public forum. Members of the public may address city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chambers information table. And before I invite the public come up, we're going to do a presentation here real quick. All right, this is a proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week. Whereas one of America's greatest national resources is its volunteers and the human resources they devote toward a healthy, productive, and humane society. Whereas the year, local citizens sign up to assist the Los Banos Police Program, VITAL, which stands for Volunteers Interacting to Advance Law Enforcement. Whereas since the inception of VITAL program in 2003, members have donated 36,907.5 hours of service to the city of Los Banos. Whereas VITAL volunteer provides service such as information and fingerprinting booths during events, crowd and traffic control, park and school safety patrol, graffiti abatement, evidence management, statistical reporting, taxi license, DUI checkpoint assistance, clerical assistance, and emergency callouts. Whereas each year, these volunteers give freely of their time, energy, and ability, and ask only for a smile and a thank you for their countless hours of service. Whereas VITAL volunteers have been called at all hours to assist with major problems such as power outages, fires, gas leaks, locating missing children, and much, much more. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby recognize the week of April 21st through April 27th, 2024, as National Volunteer Week, and take great pleasure in honoring the vital volunteers of the Los Banos Police Department and convey our sincere gratitude and appreciation for their dedication, selfless, and compassionate efforts. Thank you. Laura?
Many years ago, I was up here at the podium, and I kind of mentioned that a volunteer's paycheck is public recognition. And it's been a long time coming. I'm Larry Leonardo, the president of VITAL, which has been around since 2003, and we have donated a lot of time, as the mayor mentioned. But let me just kind of put that in dollars. That comes out to $1,001,377,369.24 in 2022 volunteer hours per dollar value. That's a time that these folks here, and there's a few more who couldn't make it today, have donated of their time to help make Los Banos a much better place to live. And I truly thank everyone for your effort to come out and do it. You know, volunteers have a heart for helping, and these people come back year after year, day after day, to help make things better in Los Banos. And for that, I think each and every one of you, and Commander Reyna, Chief Reyna, I thank you for allowing us to help with the non-law enforcement duties that we perform. And we continue to hope that we will do more and more as the years come by. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
On behalf of the police department, I just want to thank the VITAL volunteers for the tremendous amount of work that they do. When we call them, they come and they provide a valuable resource to our city. And Larry is right, so they do it from their part, and they're always more than helpful. So we thank you all for everything you do and making us so much better. Thank you.
All right, now we'll invite the public to come forward, and just a reminder to silence or turn off your cell phones.
I had not planned to speak. I had just planned to just shake hands to individuals. I'm also, besides a dog walker, a matchmaker of human and dog, and I've got a dog to deliver to a person that's going to, they're both going to have a perfect personality together in a forever home. I just wanted to just mention, I know other people probably mentioned it throughout the evening, but it was wonderful this month on April 8th and also the 14th, that we all worked as a community and as a team, the city, with Feral Freedom and also the friends of the Los Banos animals. Together, we did the microchipping. And other people will report, but I was the person that was counting and grading. And there were so much people that were so grateful to the city, grateful for coming together. They spoke to the chief, and then they also spoke to, you know, Sergeant Mendez on that Sunday. So there are wonderful people that are so excited about what's going on in the shelter, with the animals, with the community. There's a lot more to come, but I just wanted to speak from my heart to let you, these individuals were so grateful, and the dogs were so happy. Some of them did yeep, yeep, when they got it, but they're going to be able to come home soon. So thank you for doing this, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Alonson, Council. Kristin Santos here, who is in the office of Congressman John Duarte. Congressman Duarte, in a bipartisan group of House colleagues, recently introduced H.R. 7816, that's the Clear Communication for Veterans Claims Act. Earlier this month, the congressman hosted a roundtable and press conference on the bill with veteran stakeholders across the Central Valley at American Legion Post 83 in Merced. Carson Duarte is especially grateful that Post Commander Mike Hughes of VFW Post 2487 and Alan Cotta of American Legion Post 166, as well as Larry Leonardo from Los Banos Veterans, were able to participate in this forum. Veterans and their families often struggle with the complexity of notice letters from the VA regarding benefits decisions, including those related to education, healthcare, and other services. The process by which veterans apply for and receive the benefits they earned, and the course of their duty and service to this grateful nation, is at best complicated and at worst broken. The VA should be able to clearly and concisely inform veterans of the status of their veterans' benefits and claims, and yet these written notifications can often lead to even more questions. The congressman believes this is unacceptable. Carson Duarte's Clear Communication for Veterans Claims Act aims to make these letters easier and simpler to understand by requiring the VA secretary to enter into an agreement with a federally funded research and development center to assess notice letters within 30 days after the act's enactment, and requiring the VA secretary within 90 days to submit the recommendations from the FFRDC to the committees and Veterans Affairs in both the Senate and the House, and to implement those recommendations. Carson Duarte is always proud to stand with our nation's veterans. The congressman is also an original co-sponsor of the bipartisan Creating Access to Rural Employment and Education for Resilience and Success, or CAREERS Act, H.R. 7015, which aims to boost workforce development pipelines across various sectors by enhancing the rural innovation, stronger economy grant program through USDA's rural development to fund rural job accelerator partnerships that facilitate the creation of high-wage jobs, accelerate the establishment of new businesses with high-growth potential, and help rural communities maximize local assets to strengthen rural economies. Many businesses in the Coniston's district have difficulty finding employees with specific skill sets. The CAREERS Act would address the skills gap and workforce shortage in rural communities and build a brighter economic future for rural America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just want to invite everyone to our annual event on May 2nd. I know that's Fair Week. It always hits us, but we don't set the date. It's a national date for the National Day of Prayer. And so we, I've sent out email invitations. Apparently, it's gone to your spam, so check your spam if you haven't seen those. But it's May 2nd, so Thursday, from noon to 1 o'clock, be here in the council chambers. Thank you once again for opening the chambers to us to allow us to meet here and pray. We call each of you by name, and so please come if you're available, and we, the pastors of Los Banos would love to pray for you and lift you up in prayer as we are commanded to in Scripture. And so it's open to the public. We invite everyone to come to this ceremony, so we hope to see you there. May 2nd, from noon to 1, right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm Pastor Ogranio over at Mercy Springs Church. I wanted to let you know, first off, we had an amazing turnout for our immigration workshop two weeks ago, and I want to encourage the city to, to look into new ways, to reimagine new ways, to help all of those who come into our country, who are seeking asylum, who are seeking work, who are just seeking all the opportunities that many of us were privileged with. I love that I was born in this country. I would argue it's the greatest country in the world, and maybe I'm biased, but I love that I live here in Los Banos as well, and I love this community, and I pray that we would all come together to make this a place where others can also find, find those dreams and find those ways to serve in all the different capacities that we do. Each one of you I look on here has so many different aspects, from some of the best barbecue in town, I'm not saying names or looking at anybody here, to just, to just great things that we do. So, that being said, I also want to invite you to another event that we're having on April 27th, and this is for the community. We're going to be celebrating Dia de los Niños. We're just going to have an open day at the church. There's going to be games, food, it's all free, you know, just jump around, let the kids run around, get some exercise. Our goal is to give them a sugar high crash room, send them home with you, and then they, they pass out, like, right? That's, I mean, we're going to be honest about it, but it's a good time to bring the community together. And these kind of things are really great because they help us to just be people, to be parents, to be sons, to be daughters, to be whatever it is. And so I invite everybody to do that. That'll be at Mercy Springs Church on April 27th at 10:00 a.m. That being said, I also want to continue to encourage all the leaders, especially the council and our mayor. The job you have is difficult because it doesn't matter what you do, when y'all could cure cancer, and you're still going to remember by the failures that you've done. And that's just the reality of any political, any political standing. But you are servants of this community, and I want to help, to encourage you to lean into that. So many times, I hear things, and I get it, you have to protect your position and your integrity, but many times, we're hearing things like, this was from the last council, this was from the last mayor, this was from the last city manager. And we spend most of our time looking back in history of everybody who served before you in those same seats, and you remember them only in their negative fashions. And I know that not one of you would want your predecessors and those who'd go after you to do that to you either. So I encourage you to, instead of doing that, to look back on those who've gone before and realize that sometimes their job sucks, that sometimes it's just difficult, and they have to make decisions, and you realize that some of those decisions don't come out the way you want them to, and sometimes they're scrutinized unfairly, sometimes they're scrutinized fairly. So I would encourage you to think of Isaac Newton, who had said, "If I'd seen farther than others, it's because I'd stood on the shoulders of giants." Not one of you is here because you just got here. Every one of you can, can come in here, any person can come in in this position and dog on the people who've gone before you, but the work that they did in the city, the structure did, created a place where each one of you could succeed in your areas and be here and be the leaders that you are. And I pray that you would continue to not only seek to be that kind of leadership, but to say to yourself, "When I leave this seat, when I move on, I want to make it so the next person doesn't come in and feel a loss, but rather can keep going," because it shouldn't be the legacy of Pinheiro, or Begonia, or Yanez, but rather it should be the legacy of Los Banos, the community, and all that is going on. Look to the future, reimagine how it is that you lead, reimagine new ways to do stuff, because we get it. A lot of the things haven't worked. The homeless situation is a situation all over the state, and everything that we've done, billions and billions of dollars thrown at it, isn't working. So I'm asking you, right here, these seven leaders, reimagine something different. Do something bold, do something great, and don't be afraid to fail, and know that no matter what you do, sadly, you are going to remember for your failures, but you will know the great things that you've done for this community, for at least you take a swing at it. Blessings.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, staff, and public. My name is Greg Hostetler. I'm here tonight to talk about several items. One of those is a bid for asphalt paving in Los Banos for $2.5 million. You provided change orders of $1.8 million, which is about a 72% overrun on the project. And that construction was not even part of the original bid package that was awarded to an out-of-town contractor. You did not contract, contact local contractor, you did not contact a local contractor to let them know it was going to bid. You're spending money out of town, you bought cars out of this county, and you went to Hollister, California. Those cars could have been bought in Merced County and did not notify the dealers in Merced County that you would like to have a bid from them. So we keep the money local and create local jobs. Those are not good business practices. Also tonight, I'm going to provide the city with a notice of rescission of an annexation application on Pioneer Ridge. Please consider this letter formal notice that the undersigned is hereby rescinding its application that had previously initiated with the city of Los Banos to annex to the lands included in the annexation application commonly referred to as Pioneer Ridge. It was intended Pioneer Ridge's annexation encompasses approximately 235 acres of land adjacent to the city of Los Banos. An intended development would have helped fulfill many of the goals for the community highlighted, community highlighted in the recently updated general plan. It would have also supported approximately 705 family residential homes. These homes and the neighborhoods would have provided substantial new housing options for citizens in Los Banos and helped with the affordability and homeless in our community. Unfortunately, there has been substantial delays over 15 years with the city, as well as multiple additional delays and costs imposed and associated to numerous other potential infill projects. This intended Pioneer Ridge's annexation is only one of several incurring delays such as Presidential State North Point and others. Sincerely, Greg Hostetler. And I'll hand this to the city clerk. The next item, I want to talk about the citations or the inspection of parking lots that are being, and potential citations issued to private parties for potholes. On April 17th, 2024, the, an exterior lot inspection of the Ranchwood Park was conducted to identify Los Banos Municipal Code violations. I observed the following violations. Los Banos Municipal Code 9-3, parking improvement standards, Los Banos LBM 4-6, maintenance of premises that is unsightly in despair. LBM 4-6, property constitutes a public nuisance. Correction required, repave asphalt or fix potholes in lot and repaint parking lot stall line to ensure visible parking spaces. Sweep loose gravel and asphalt from the parking lot. Required corrections. Violation should be corrected within 30 days from the receipt of the notice. A follow-up inspection will be conducted at the end of below deadline to confirm your compliance. Correction violation should be by 5/24/24. And that is your district, Mr. Kenneth Lambert. And I talked to you about this a month ago, and all you've done, that I've seen in your district, is fill four potholes. And I inspected that today, and the Ranchwood Park had not been touched, has over six potholes in that alone, plus over 35 from that park to Overland Avenue. It's a disaster out there. You're a councilman there for four years. What have you ever done?
36.
To take money from the city? You get paid to be a councilman. You ran for office to help the neighborhood. You haven't helped the residents that live out there. All you've done is take money, 25 grand donation from somebody, the group up on this council. You took council money. And private people didn't get that money, you did as a councilman. I'm not too sure you even had a license to get that at the right time. I'm going to investigate that and find out whether or not the grand jury needs to review that deal also. But this, this district you're in is a disaster. There's 75%.
That's done.
We're done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Ann McCauley.
Can you pull the mic?
Local resident.
Can you pull the mic towards you? Thank you.
I'm Ann McCauley. Thank you for having a council meeting tonight, since I know we won't have one for about a month with the May Day coming up. Next, on April 23rd at 6:00 p.m. at the Board of Supervisors chambers in Merced, there will be a volunteer recognition program. I've been a judge on that, with that program for some years now, and I really enjoy it. The thing that I'd like to mention tonight, there will be several people nominated from District 5, which got Silveira overseas as commissioner. It'd be fun to have a lot more. There's a lot of people and organizations in every area that do a lot of work, and it would be nice to recognize them. So I would say for next year, be thinking of people, and you can submit as many as you want. It makes the judging a lot more interesting when you have to pick among a larger number. But anyway, people do a lot of great work. VITAL was recognized tonight, and there's many others. So keep that in mind for next year. If you want some more about that program, I can answer that, or even Scott Silveira. The next thing I want to say is, our sheriff's department in Merced County serves a very rural area in California. There's no question about it. We may be the largest town on this side, and Merced on the other side, but they are severely understaffed when it comes to deputy sheriffs. As I understand it, I believe there's probably close to 20 seats that are vacant, that are need to be filled, and the biggest problem is they're not paid enough. I think our police get paid more than I think our police get paid more than they do. And I'm glad that we have a fairly good-staffed police department here. We can always do more, we can always get more, but we really cannot afford to overlook what goes on with the deputy sheriffs and the area that they have to cover. You know, if any of us have relatives or family friends or whatever that live out in the county and they can't get services, immediate emergency services because we're understaffed in that department, that should be a wake-up call. So I would suggest for anybody that goes to an MCAG meeting, please address the councilmen or the commissioners, why is this issue not being addressed? I've seen it in the paper, I've seen some notices that maybe our own commissioner isn't returning phone calls, but these would be questions to find out. We just need to get that department staffed. And we need to get them paid properly, because they're just going to have to leave for someplace else that'll pay them appropriately. Nobody should have to consider that their job, no matter how important, is considered much more than just volunteer pay, because it pays so little. The other thing that I want to address is, this kind of comes up with one of the recent comments tonight. I don't think anybody doing business in town should be given any opportunities to bid on future projects or even get new projects if they have anything in their prior contracts that was not satisfied completely. In other words, everything was signed off, there's no more punch list items. Because I find that really disturbing, when any contractor wants more business, but there's sure a lot of stuff that has left to be done. And one of the things that I mentioned in the last time that I was up here was DeAnza and Pioneer. Greg Hostetler could have put in some landscaping lighting. And shame on any contractor for not even doing that bit that would help to make that entrance look inviting. This is your project, be proud of it. The other thing I'll say is, I don't know how building more family homes in the range of 300,000 to 500,000 or more would help the homelessness. And I think most of the homeless are living in tents. How do they afford that house?
Thirty seconds.
So that response is a little bit, leaves a lot to be desired. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. I have three questions. I forgot one at home, so I'll have to take it from memory. The question I have, you can answer it at any time during the meeting when the item's brought up, or at the end where you say your speeches. Imagine Waymore was at the Easter egg hunt, and he had quite a few crew members with him, cameramen, various people that were helping him. My question that I wanted to ask was, does he pay those people on his own as part of his business, or is that something that is above and beyond the $7,500 we pay him? That's my one question. Or are we paying them by credit cards, since we've done that before in the past, paid vendors with a credit card? So that's one question. The rate increase that you're going to be talking about that has 3.5% a year that you're allowed to do, right now it's at 2.4. When we pay our monthly utility bills, we pay a certain amount to go to future maintenance and, you know, any problems that might arise. What I'm asking is, if we haven't done maintenance in 20 years, as Mr. Jones tells me we haven't, and we've ignored problems, and we have this huge bill right now because we've ignored that, where is that percentage of my utility bill that has been stored? Was that utilized, and why were I taking more out of the fund? Okay, that's my second question. My third question is, I come to these meetings quite a bit. When they brought up the archway to downtown Los Banos, I thought that they had put a kibosh to it because it was too expensive. It's something that we're bringing up again, and I feel that, and I've said this before in other meetings, Mr. Jones knows I've said it. Everybody has a first impression. You don't invite them over to see your house and just have petunias out front when the house is falling apart. You repair the house before you invite people into it. What I'm asking, and I brought up before, you guys put up a sign that might tempt somebody to turn into downtown and go, holy crap, why am I here? You know, you've got lighting on it for night. I don't know of any business that is open at night. I think most of it closes down. I think Penny's open, and yeah, I think that's about it. I don't know of other ones that are open late. So shouldn't we clean up downtown? And I know everybody tells me you can't get merchants in unless it looks nice. Well, putting up a sign, I don't think is going to make a developer come here and say, oh my God, I want to buy this block and put in all this cool stuff. You need to clean it up first. And I know you're trying, the Downtown Association is trying, they've got cameras up, they put those bucket thingies, and you've changed the flags, you've tried to make it more attractive. But you're drawing people in to see certain types of businesses that they can see anywhere. There's nothing to draw them down there. I understand. But that's my next question. I can't believe we're paying a half a million dollars for an archway to downtown Los Banos. I think it's not wise use of money. I really would rather fix Colorado Park and some of the stuff for the people who live here, not to draw people into. Thank you.
Hello, Maryboe Garcia, on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association. Overall, I just want to speak about our newsletter and our Wine and Beer Stroll on April 27 and our Farmer's Market. That's going to be every other Thursday starting May 16. So overall, our newsletter is really about our history and our present, and if you kind of look at it and you see it, it kind of does explain a little bit of our history and our present, and what we are doing, and what we are going to keep doing, and all the amazing things that literally we are doing. So overall, we do have our Wine and Beer Stroll. It is going to be on Saturday, April 27, 5:00 to 10:00 PM. There's 14 merchants that are actually participating, and I want to be very clear on that, because it's so important that people do say certain things. And overall, we have 14 merchants that are participating on I Street. And we want everybody to participate. We're a part of a P-Bid that consists of I, J, and K, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh. We are not just I Street or Sixth Street. We are a P-Bid that consists of Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh, I, J, and K. I want to be very clear on that. And we want to work with everybody that wants to work with us. And the merchants that are participating are, and I'm very proud, actually, because we have the Los Banos Arts Council that is participating, we have Chema Stitches, we have Hotel Mission de Oro that's actually participating as well, Heritage Fun Zone, En Rincón, Tony Rendezvous, Lucky Strike, Bernie's Mixology, we have Perle Luxury Salon, we have Biggins Texas Barbecue, we have Las Brasas Bar and Mexican Food, we have Posa Loca, and we also have Naomi Townsend, Realtor. Let's be clear. So it's not just merchants, but it's vendors as well, but basically it is merchants on I Street. These are people that are on I Street. So please come and join us. You can buy tickets on our website, they're already ready to go. If you get in with the Downtown Association, they're $30, the day of, they will be $40, keep that in mind. And we do have wineries participating as well, and so I want to be clear on that, because we do. But overall, it's really showcasing our merchants, and that's what it's really about. And Farmer's Market, May 16, yes, we're all excited, and it is happening, and we're making it happen, so please, just tune in, and thank you. And thank you for the people that do participate, and thank you for everybody and all our sponsors, and really, everybody that genuinely supports the Los Banos Downtown Association. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm going to lead off with something different this time. The Pioneer and DeAnza, the park, I've heard conflicting reasons and why it stopped at this point. I don't understand what is going on. I'd like to know where we are in that process or what's going to happen. It was supposed to be done by summer, that is not going to happen. It's not fair to the residents who bought houses with that park that was supposed to be in that development. It's been over a year since that development's been finished, and there is no park, there was going to be one, but now it's completely stopped. So I would like an update on that. I can email you if that would be a better way to get a response on what's going on, leave my phone number, whatever works best. Along with that is the same thing, the entrance at DeAnza and Pioneer, what is happening with that? I know it's going to be a long process, but an update once in a while that there still is a process would be nice to know. The other, my other topic, the homeless. So summer's coming, the weather's getting warmer, the nights are getting shorter, so there's more daylight, and with that, the homeless now come out of their shelters because it's not raining and it's warmer, and that means they're out longer at night. It's been over a year since I've been coming and talking about this, and so now I'm headed back into the same position again, in that they are up all night, and they're going to be out, because it's warmer, all night. And there's noise, and there's a lot of noise, disturbing noise. I have to get up at 4:00 in the morning. I don't get sleep. I can't open my windows. When I do open my windows, all I hear is noise, and dogs barking, and people, and motor bikes, and everything you can imagine, stereos. And who do, I have called before, I've talked about that previously, that I have problems. When I call, getting any kind of response, or, I mean, how, I need some way to know how I get a response. When I do call, it's not because I heard a noise, it's because I absolutely cannot sleep at this point, and it's too much. So I need to know how, when I call, what I say in order to get some type of response back, that we can eliminate that situation. I would appreciate some help. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, fellow residents, good evening. First of all, I want to give credit where credit is due. I want to thank you for the work that you've done, with the animal shelter, a lot of improvements there. Crease and Staff has really created a lot more opportunity for animals to be adopted, adopted quicker, the spay and neuter clinics, the chipping that's been, animal chip program. Thank you very much for allowing that to happen and in your leadership in making that Unfortunately, my Doberman passed away suddenly not too long ago, and a dog advocate, I won't mention her name because I didn't clear it with her previously, but she mentioned that there was a Doberman that was brought in that was considered to be vicious and was slated to be put down. So I went down there and it was just not a good match with the previous family. They're high-energy animals, they require a lot of stimulation, a lot of work, and if they're not given that, then they act out. Named him Maximus, beautiful dog. So again, that, the process was very seamless, and the staff there was incredibly professional. So again, thank you very much for that. The parks, the parks, again, a lot of work being done in the parks, so I appreciate that very much. It's, I've been saying this before, a lot of our residents, they are in the lower socioeconomic bracket, they don't have money or resources to take their family to Disneyland or even out of the city sometimes. So the parks is their Disneyland, that's their retreat, that's their getaway, that's where they can bond with their family, get away from the hustle and bustle. So it's very nice when the parks are being addressed. It's something that I know that Director Heim is passionate about, and I've always appreciated his drive, and you're allowing him to put that, those visions into reality, make those reality. Again, one of the, and we've had this in the past, you know, it's not just something that's happened recently, although I do appreciate it. For example, we just had the Easter egg hunt at Old Bell Park from the previous council, previous mayor, et cetera. Beautiful park, we're blessed to have it. Closer to my area, you have College Greens, College Greens Park. Working with then-City Councilmember Mr. Freya, they leveled the field, well, before they leveled the field, they replaced all the irrigation, new sprinklers, new timers, painted the building, beautiful building, nice light, put new lights there. So again, it's a collective effort. Previous councils have done that, but again, you've done that, and so I appreciate it. You've got to give credit where credit is due. Safety, the DeAnza interchange off of going into 165 Mercy Springs. It was very disappointing to hear that the developer had reached out over a year ago and said, hey, I can get all these key players together, let's make this happen, and that offer of help was refused. So now we have a situation which is unsafe for a lot of our schoolchildren. As you know, they exit that place in order to cross the street and go to school, and they come back the same way. The area has no sidewalk, it's uneven terrain, it's muddy, it's slippery, so it's a real safety issue. So I hope that we reengage with the key stakeholders here that can make that thing happen. Another issue of safety is the path from City of Los Banos to the college. That was funded, that was identified, Caltrans identified the, mitigated safety issues, but we decided not to do it. Hopefully, we can readdress that and get that project back underway. There was the question as to what I want. Well, I don't want a position, I don't want a title. What I like is restoration of truly a citizen-run government, where citizens are allowed to participate fully in the decisions that are made. What I'd like to see is restoration of the civil protection for our staff, so they can freely express themselves, give you their opinion based on their experience, their knowledge, and their expertise, which is essential in order to come up with the right solution.
Thirty seconds.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum. Move on to Item Six, consideration of approval of the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 244444 through 244707 in the amount of $2,762,625.79. Third quarter investment report for 2023-2024. City Council Resolution Number 6758, approving the acceptance of a $7,500 Petco Love Animal Welfare Organization's grant and amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $7,500. City Council Resolution Number 6759, approving the annual local transportation fund claim to be filed with the Merced County Association of Governments for fiscal year 2023-2024. City Council Resolution Number 6760, accepting the Seven Street Ballpark turf field renovation project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6761, accepting the certification of registrar voters of the results of the canvas of the March 5, 2024 presidential primary special municipal election pertaining to Measure G, shall the offices of City Clerk and City Treasurer be appointed? And Measure H, shall the term of office of Mayor be four years? City Council Resolution Number 6762, awarding contract for design Awarding contract for design, manufacture, construction and installation of the downtown gateway sign project. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you for that. Before I go around asking council members if there's any items for discussion, I'm going to request that we remove item G for discussion at the request of the public to me. So item G is in George. And any other members of the council request to pull an item for discussion? All right. So let's do G as in George by itself. For this, we'll go to Community and Economic Director, Suzanne.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a particular question or something I can clarify?
I would like to kind of learn the history of it. And again, kind of just, and I know where it falls in the strategic plan of things, but just to get some, some history of the, of the item itself detailed would be great.
Okay, sure. So just a little bit of background. The downtown gateway sign was listed as a strategy within the adopted downtown strategic plan, which is available on the city's website. The city council adopted the strategic plan on February 5, 2020. So then after the adoption of the strategic plan, city staff came to the council and the council prioritized the 10 strategies in what order they would like staff to focus on. The, the downtown gateway sign was one of the first priorities. So staff, after direction from the council, enlisted the original architect, which is NMNR. They were the original architect that had worked with the redevelopment agency in designing back in the 90s, a, an entrance gateway sign. So I was able to find a rendering in one of the closets at City Hall and found an architect's name on the corner of it, reached out to them and had said, hey, we'd like to dust off this project. The redevelopment agency worked with you. It was a very grandiose plan because it had redevelopment agency dollars. So the direction to them was, can you provide a similar sign, but pared down simpler to something that a city in the Central Valley could afford? So they did that. While that was all happening though, May of 2022, the city did purchase the northeast corner of Sixth and Pacheco Boulevard for the intent of not only creating an ornamental entrance for downtown, but also to be a part of the footing for that future sign, that, that big arch that would go over Sixth Street. Then soon thereafter that, we did secure an easement from O'Reilly's, which this all came to the city council. And then bid docs, based on NMNR's architectural rendering. We did go out, we prepared bid docs and we released that formal bid in May of 2023. We received two bids, which were about a million dollars. So after that, staff came back to the city council to reject those bids because we, we huddled and figured that we could, with value engineering, get the cost of the sign down. So that was our goal to really see if we could bring that cost down. We had only two proposals, so it wasn't very competitive on top of that. But we felt that with some valued engineering, we could bring that cost down between maybe 500 to 600,000. So after that, staff prepared an RFP. We provided very specific instructions that we were looking for a design between 500 to 600,000. We released that on December 2023. We did receive two proposals and they were received in January of this year. One of the proposals was non-responsive, so they didn't provide all of the information that we needed. So the only responsive proposal was from M&amp;F Metals. They're out of Turlock. The proposal is for $588,272.49. And the contract and the resolution awarding the contract are included in the staff report. So I hope I've clarified any, any questions and some of that history for you.
No, that was a great rundown. I do have a quick question as far as the, and again, the, the comment was made earlier about, you know, kind of cleaning up the downtown area. And I know that we've leaps and strides far more than just lighting and trimming trees, but painting Miller and Lux and, you know, painting City Hall and the Annex Building and as well as some of the grants that have been out, have been to do restoration projects, painting projects with downtown businesses.
Facade improvements. The Downtown Association has been a tremendous partner in helping us revitalize our downtown. Lots of activity. Every month, they are doing something. They are pressure washing the sidewalks. They are having events. Cameras, the security, thank you, Joe, the security cameras, the, the plantings. I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Now, what we were hearing, and this goes back to the development of this downtown strategic plan, we were hearing not only from stakeholders, but the community at large. We held multiple workshops just to create this strategic plan. And the number one thing we heard from the community and merchants was that we have 35,000 cars on Pacheco Boulevard and no one knows where our downtown is located. We need something to capture them, take those cars off of the highway, bring them into downtown. So that's why the council adopted, the strategic plan adopted, directed staff to move forward with the development of the gateway sign project. It has been a long process. It's been in the works since 2000. Just with COVID and everything else happening, it, it has taken us a while, but we are finally at a point where we'd like to see if we can move forward with the project. And we, we have designed earmarked in this fiscal year and we'd like to move forward.
All right, yeah. And, you know, and I agree 100% as far as small business, they don't know. People have no idea where our downtown is. And I've heard that, that same conversation. And, you know, the other thing too is kind of a comment that was made earlier. We're not going to know until we try, right? So we're going to, we're going to have to try to, to help our business associates downtown. So I'll go with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Stacy, there was one other bid in the packet from Swearingen Builders. Do they have renderings or what, what did they, what did they give us or what was provided to them?
Sure. So those were the two bids that were rejected by the city council. So Swinerton and BC Construction were both rejected because they came in at about the million-dollar mark.
But they, they didn't, with this company that you're accepting or looking at to accept P&amp;F, did their packet include the renderings as well?
So we provided them our renderings and we are having them design the sign for that dollar amount per our renderings.
Did you provide that information to Swearing, Swearingen as well?
Yes, they had the same renderings and construction dogs.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I, I think, you know, we had a community member come forth and, and talk about getting our downtown in shape. And that, you know, when we were having workshops to develop, to start working or thinking about having a downtown association, that was part of the, the presentation to us, is to mimic what they did in Atwa, in Turlock. In Turlock, yes, their downtown, to renovate their downtown, renovate their buildings, get new merchants in there. And until we're able to do that, we, we've got a few vacancies downtown on Sixth Street. That's our, our main area, Sixth Street. And yes, some buildings may have been painted, but as far as updating the entrance to the building to, to be more inviting to today's time and what people are looking for in architect, hasn't happened. And, and I appreciate the, the building owners, the property owners who have painted their building. But there has to be this effort to help market and help get people downtown for what we have. And, you know, we have people who sit on the Downtown Association who are building owners down there. We have a wonderful corner building of the old Rexall Drugstore, which could be a wonderful marketing place for whatever. You know, a restaurant for people to go in and have, you know, I'm talking about a nice restaurant to come in, in the downtown area and, and have a meal. And, you know, I, I know it's not fair to compare us to Morgan Hill. That's where I came from when I moved here. And certainly, the economics of Morgan Hill is quite different from what we have here in Los Banos. However, there's been a concerted effort for a long time in, in the 30-plus years since I've left there to move that downtown to where it is now. And so, you know, I'd like to see the plan. You know, what is the plan? Why are we putting up a sign to get people downtown when we have the same thing? Our merchants are closed at five o'clock. People who work and want to shop there, they, they can't shop. So, and there have been a few merchants who have painted their, their buildings and some of those buildings have, you know, had graffiti placed on the side and there's, you know, been a little bit of the cleanup there. But we've got to do a better job with the Downtown Association and the city to help market our downtown. And I think we need to get other businesses in there that are going to draw the community that we have here in Los Banos into the downtown area. I'll tell you personally, right up front, I really don't like those flower pots that are down there. They don't do anything for the architectural design of what's, what, what we have in our downtown. I'd like to see something more colorful. And it doesn't have to all be the same color. It could be, you know, a blue pot or a yellow pot or something else. But the, these are things that we need the eye on. If the Downtown Association is going to really help us move our downtown forward and help it to be a downtown that is attractive to come to and people want to see and, and be there, a place, a destination place to be. There has to be businesses down there that people want to come to. And we do have a few. We have a few nice businesses down there. We had the, the salon that upgraded. That was a wonderful thing. But we need more of that. We need more of upgrading our downtown. And bringing in a sign to bring people off Pacheco Highway isn't going to do that if, if we are not marketing our downtown. And that's an effort, not only with the Downtown Association and the city, but the Chamber of Commerce as well. And I've made suggestions to the chamber, you know, just out of my head of what I thought might help them get people into the downtown area. But I, I think we've, you know, we're putting the cart before the horse on this. I'm not saying we don't need a sign. And that money, if, if we don't use it now, we can afford it into the next fiscal year budget. But I think we need to work on our downtown, what businesses we have there and what we have to offer people before we put a sign up. So I'm in favor of, at this point, not moving forward with this sign and to move that money into the 2024-25 fiscal year budget. And let's see what we could get going in our downtown to bring more businesses there. I see we're going to have a wine stroll. Our old merchant association used to do that. They kept their stores open at night and we had a lot of people down there shopping and buying gifts for Christmas and buying gifts for, you know, whatever the occasion may have been. Because usually they would have that around Christmas time and, and twice a year as, if my memory serves me correctly. But I only see on this list one merchant on Sixth Street. I don't see any Sixth Street merchants on here. And that was generally where the stroll was. And I appreciate the businesses that are trying to upgrade on I Street. I truly do. But, you know, the place where the dollar shopping is happening is, it's not, it's not on here. So I'd like to know what's going on. Why, why aren't these merchants willing to purchase, willing to participate in the beer and wine stroll? So, you know, I'm just kind of throwing all this stuff in the pot as something that needs to be thought about. And I, I just think we need to wait on the sign right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You want to go first, Mike? I know you were wanting to go first. Do you want to go?
I'll go. Okay, so I totally disagree. Marketing. Well, marketing is advertising or advertising is a sign. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, even before I was councilman and I want to comment on one of our public forum, he was talking about legacy. Well, I, I actually spoke to our previous, our previous two mayors, Mr. Velada, and one of his legacies was the sign in Pioneer Road. Now, I, I don't have no problem. I like to fulfill people's legacy priorities also myself. But now, if people don't know where, I've got people that come to my business. They didn't even know I was downtown. So if they can't get, so if they've seen a sign, which is advertising, people are going to drive downtown. So I understand it's been taking a little while. And I've watched a lot of comments on Facebook, especially, you know, things like this part here, the splash pads. Everything's starting to take its time. But now that we're back in a stroll of things, we're starting to get things done that's been on the, on a burner. And this one right here, the, the sign, I think the last time we spoke about it was in 2023, if I'm correct, right? Everybody was on board with it. The, the cost now, if we push it off till next year, we're not going to get it at the same cost. It's probably going to double. So now while it's budgeted, we get the sign done. And yes, the sign, I've been to every, a lot of these cities. And most of all these cities, Turlock, Merced, everybody has an entrance sign to their town, to their downtown areas. It's not a, it's not a, a not known or, it's just every city has some type of sign to their downtown. And yes, when I first, when I was elected first time, it was the first time I heard of it when they brought it to. And it was back when it was up worth a billion dollars. And it was a little outrageous. But from now, I mean, we see that it's been brought back to us at half of what it was originally. And I don't see any way, any problem with moving forward to getting the advertisement downtown that this downtown needs. They've been wanting it, first of all, when they wanted the sign, they wanted to get it down to see where Henry Miller Plaza was. That was the first thing I, I remember. You know, let's get people down to where that, the plaza where the statues are. People don't even know we have statues back there. Because they don't even know we have a downtown. And I, one of the comments was, well, people are going to just veer off the road because they think that's the, the road to go down. Well, you know, if that's the case, they'll, they'll figure their way out. But then at least they'll get to see the scenic view and see the downtown area. But most cars will still, if they're not looking towards it, they're just passing through, they're going to stay on 152. This is just showing us, hey, this is Los Banos. This is the, we want it to be the, the best, the best entrance sign we can to our great city of Los Banos. You know, it's not about, you know, to me, everything is going to, it's just going to double if we just keep putting it off and putting it off. And I, with this, I just can't see putting it off anymore because it's just going to cost even more. You know, we've been on this for 15, how many years? Four years? So it, it's time to, time to move forward now. And with some of the, the ideas that our previous councils and mayors have left that say that it was their legacy to try to get time. And it's one of the ones that we can fulfill, fulfill for them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes, one, one person or one group of people that I want to add that's, has skin in the game on this sign, not directly, but indirectly to our downtown, is some of the landowners, they have vacancies that they've been holding out on. They're trying to find the right tenant, the tenant that will complement the rest of the downtown. And so they hold these vacancies in hope of the right tenants instead of just filling it with anybody that comes across. So there's some landowner with some serious game, skin in the game here that they're hoping that we make right decisions up here to help promote the success of the downtown. When it comes to the sign, this sign's important. Putting it at the front, I mean, that's just the easiest thing. If we wanted to waste money, we'd throw it in the back. Kind of putting the cart before the horse, Henry Miller Plaza in the back, how do people know it's there? Unless somehow we were able to direct them down there. So, you know, this is probably long overdue. It's something that's needed. It is a little pricey. But at the same point, we're, we're trying to revitalize the downtown and you got to get the attention downtown. and you got to get the attention downtown. And some people, a lot of people are not on social media. A lot of people are not part of Los Banos, but they're driving by and they may not stop by or go downtown that day. But maybe on their way back from going wherever they went to, they might stop by and just check it out. They might see some vacancies. They might see some buildings that may be up for sale. We have on I Street, two new businesses that are coming in that are probably going to be first class, that are going to be real nice. Blue Agave, it's going to be a restaurant. And then we have the Jams 209, which is going to be another restaurant, entertainment space. And these guys have completely guided the building from the sewer lineup. I mean, there's just nothing original other than maybe the exterior walls to these things. And so I really commend these guys for putting this investment into our downtown. And now they're hoping we do our job by doing everything we can to help make them as successful as possible. So I think this is great. Thank you for staff for planning it. The design is amazing. It's way better than the original version that you guys showed us. I'm excited for this, so thank you.
All right. Yeah, so I own two businesses. And I will tell you, in business, one of the things that we do in marketing and sales is KPIs. KPI stands for Key Performance Indicator. And whatever structures that we can use in marketing, kind of like fishing bait, right? We toss out the pole. What's that pole look like? Could look like a flyer, could look like a social media ad, could be like a mass mailer, could be whatever. Well, COVID impacted so many businesses. And who was hurt the most, right? Our small businesses, especially those downtown. So I don't think it's fair that we go back to the small businesses and say, you've been through a ton, but we need more from you, right? And we know that we have an opportunity. And again, it may not drive in a ton of traffic. And I know we talked about if the businesses close at 5 o'clock, what a great problem to have if you're a small business owner and you're like, well, I should probably stay open to 7:00 to make more money. Or maybe I should be open on a weekend if I want to make more money. What a great problem to even consider, right? And so that's how I'm looking at it, is this is a way to draw the cars in. Also, people in Los Banos, right, what do they do? They commute over the hill. What do they not want to do? They don't want to commute over the hill on the weekend. They wouldn't want to go out of town. So by giving them this investment, we can say, look, we're giving literally a sign to you downtown and, and hoping that you take advantage of it. And then just give those, those local business owners the opportunity, hey, it's one more resource, it's one more tool. Again, it's not a guarantee of anything. But again, 32,000 vehicles per Caltrans travel on that street. You know, somebody's going to want to stop and eat at Jam. Somebody's going to want to check out, you know, small businesses and look, see what we have. And so I, I think it's a, I think it's a great investment. And again, I, I think small businesses downtown, especially downtown, they've been through enough. They've been through so much, it's not really fair to ask more of them. So, so I'm, I'm for this project. So we'll vote on this one separately? Or do we want to, yeah, let's do it separately. You do a roll call vote for item G? Oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion first. A motion on item G by itself. Oh, your button's not working?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve City Council Resolution Number 6762, estimated.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All right. Have a roll call vote, please?
Lambert?
Yes.
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Lewis?
Giannis?
Yes. All right, motion passes. And then can we do the rest of the consent agenda? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council, well, consent agenda, items A through F, as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Okay, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, public hearing. He challenges proposed action as described herein in court. You may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So move on to item 7A, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit, categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and conditional use permit number 2024-02 to allow the use of a Type 21 alcohol license for the off-sale and general alcohol for Western Sing Stores Inc., DBA Los Banos Liquor, located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District at 947 West Pacheco Boulevard, Suite A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this particular item was reviewed by the Planning Commission on February 28, 2024, and they recommended approval after receiving the public hearing and the staff report of conditional use permit 2024-02 to the Los Banos City Council. The proposal for you tonight is for a conditional use permit. And it is for a Type 21, which is for the off-sale of general alcohol. It will be regulated by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC. And the days and hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. This is the location. This is the San Luis Shopping Center, San Luis Plaza. The location of 947 West Pacheco Suite A is highlighted in yellow. It's, as you can see, it's, it's much smaller than what you would think that suite consists of. And I'll show pictures of what the suite is. Big Lots is the star in red and La Esperanza is the star in green. This is off of West Pacheco. It is bordered by West I Street and Ortigalita. SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301, it is an existing facility and the floor print of the existing facility will not expand. And this is the permitting of an existing facility, which meets that exemption. The use permit analysis, the municipal code, the Los Banos Municipal Code, has specific findings for conditional use permits. So it has general criteria. And then it has further findings for alcohol. And then ABC, like we said, is the issuing authority. This project is located in Census Track 23.01. And actually, I'm going to take just a second to go back that those findings are provided within the staff report. And if you have any questions, let me know. But those are our standard findings. So this is within Census Track 23.01. As you can see, 23.01 is in the southwest quadrant of the city of Los Banos. There are currently 13 off-sale licenses. And this takes us from the most western border of the city all the way to Mercy Springs. And this would be an additional license to that Census tract. This is the proposed floor plan with security cameras. The security cameras are outlined in yellow. The floor plan outlines, it labels where the alcohol displays and where those sales will be. And conditions of approval have been incorporated as well to mitigate any adverse effects. This is the frontage of the building. This is the inside, the interior of Suite A. As you can see, it's not that, it's not very big. Just another angle of that building. Public comment, public hearing notices were published in the Merced Sunstar mailed to adjacent property owners on April 5. And as of today's date, no formal comments have been received. So staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 6763, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from SEQA and approving conditional use permit number 2024-02 to allow for the off-sale of general alcohol for Western Sing Stores Inc., located at 947 West Pacheco Boulevard, Suite A. I do want to note that a revision has been made to condition of approval number eight. It has been updated from 15% to 40%. The condition reads that the shelf cooler space devoted to beer, wine, and distilled spirits beverages shall be limited to 40% of the square footage of the store as depicted on the approved labeled floor plan. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public want to come forward? No? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And questions from council? Seeing none? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution, Resolution Number 6763 as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second one minute.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Move on to item B, public hearing to receive public comment consideration of an annual adjustment of the Los Banos Development Impact Fee Schedule based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. This will also go back to Community and Economic Development Director Susan.
Okay, this is the last one. So Development Impact Fee Schedule Adjustment, we do this yearly. But just some background. In January 2020, the City Council approved Development Impact Fee Justification Study, which was a NEXUS study. The development impact fees are established in conformance with the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act. A fee cannot include costs for existing deficiencies. So that study had to determine what would be mitigation for future needs for capital improvements. And the fee is to fund costs used to maintain the existing level of service or meet an adopted level of service that is consistent with the general plan. So that NEXUS study, what it does is it takes the needs of all of the city's infrastructure and determines what development's portion of those fees need to be. The development impact fees do not pay for operation and maintenance of capital facilities or city staffing costs. Development impact fees are separated from the general fund and from other city budget funds or accounts containing fees collected for other purposes. So they're not commingled with any other fees. So the annual adjustment in Resolution Number 6163, it states that impact fees shall be modified annually each July 1. And it provides direction on how to do this. It's in accordance with the Engineering News Records Construction Cost Index. And it's reported for the 12th month period ending in April. So the adjustment ending in April 2024 was 1.1% increase. As you may recall, last year's adjustment was 1.4%. This increase would be applied to all development impact fees and will go into effect July 1, 2024. This is a comparison of the current fee. So single family, we're about $33,000, just about $33,000. And with the new adjustment of 1.1%, we would be at $33,323. Now, these fees are per unit. And on commercial, which is asterisk, those are based on square footage. According to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this report is exempt per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, in that it is a report to the City Council. The fiscal impact, the 1.1% increase would ensure new development is adequately funding its share of costs of new public facilities as the cost to construct these projects increase over time and ensures the city does not subsidize new development's share of these facilities and that adequate funding is available when the city is ready to construct those projects. Public hearing notice was published in the Merced Sunstar on April 5. Local developers and the Builders Institute Association were directly mailed public notices on April 4. And no formal comments have been received. So staff is recommending that the City Council would open the public hearing, receive any public comments regarding the proposed impact fee adjustment, find the proposed impact fee adjustment exempt from SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Section 15061B3, and adopt Resolution Number 6764 approving a 1.1% increase to development impact fees to reflect construction cost changes in 2024 and to become effective on July 1, 2024. And that concludes my report.
All right. And do I have a motion for? Oh, I'm sorry, we'll do the public, public forum. Open the public forum on the public hearing, on the same?
Good evening again. I'm Ann McCauley, local resident. You know, with inflation, definitely not under control. I think we see it every day. Nobody has to tell us they've got something under control. I have a concern whether 1.1% is really sufficient. You know, we're talking about, we're not mitigating any deficiencies, but we want to make sure that we have enough funds in, to do, to cover what's projected ahead. So that's my biggest concern, is I'm not convinced that 1.1% is, is enough. You know, and of course, this is something that's, that's passed on to the new, new homes, right? If I'm not mistaken. So, you know, that burden isn't on the current homeowner, but we certainly don't need to be, you know, short-sighted when it comes to making sure that these fees are properly priced out. And that's my biggest concern.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Akash Narwal. I'm a land acquisitioner for D.R. Horton. Before I get to my proposal, I wanted to address something that the public has brought up for homeless housing. If you get a grant from Governor Newsom, I can hook you up with a prefabricated home builder that will help solve the homeless solution. But there's a housing crisis in California. And it's never been more, we all know it's never been more expensive to own a home in California. Rising impact fees and charging absurdly high school mitigation fees only negatively affects the local community. Sure, there are people willing to relocate the one- to two-hour drive from the Bay Area to San Jose, like Councilmember Louis from Morgan Hill. It actually turns out, data pulled from our Pacheco Point 3 and Pacheco Point 4 neighborhoods in North Los Banos, more than 40% of home buyers are from within the local community. The thing that should shock you guys the most is that the average household income needed to qualify for a house is $10,000 a month. So that begs the question, how is D.R. Horton selling homes in a market for which the average household income is $6,000 a month? Well, it turns out, the average, the mortgage payment is derived from more than multiple sources of income. It's not just husband and wife pulling together resources. It's oftentimes another family member or multiple families living together to afford to pay the mortgage. And every, so you can say, what's the harm of increasing impact fees 1.1% from the previous calendar year? But by doing so, you're moving in the wrong direction and directly pricing families out of the market for a new house. Last Friday, the United States Supreme Court reached a unanimous decision on impact fees specifically in California. They voted unanimously nine to zero. That is unconstitutional to build, to force home builders to pay absurdly high, unfair, unproportional impact fees for public projects. We gathered information from the city and found out that Anderson Homes is paying $17.5 million in impact fees and school fees on their 271 lots in Villages V. D.R. Horton is paying $9 million in impact fees and, and school fees in our 144 lots we bought from Stonefield. That's $30,000 impact fees, $30,000 school fees for us. Anderson's paying $37,000 in impact and $27,000 in school mitigation fees. And this is not, so this is not the Silicon Valley. This is a farming community, Los Banos. Our, the population is 50,000 compared to the city of Merced, 100,000, which is double. Those impact fees are $10,000 to $15,000 less. So, and also, there's been a progressive $30,000 per home increase in the last 12 years from the state of California already. That's been tacked on to home prices. 2010, there's been $2,500 for energy efficiency. 2011, $2,000 for residential green standards. $6,000 for fire sprinklers. 2014, $3,000 for energy code. 2017, $3,000 for design. 2020, $15,000 to $20,000 for solar. And then just 2023, $15,000 to $3,500 for the electric. So I think it's, to summarize, please be mindful of the families. And they're not a minority, of the local families that want to buy in the lovely community of Los Banos. It's not a minority. They're stretching their dollars to afford to buy houses. It's multiple families coming in. And this is a tax on new development. Home builders like us, we're not causing the housing crisis. We're actually trying to solve it. So why should we be subject and penalized to these increased impact fees? I think it's rather fair to ask you to decrease them because in Merced, which has doubled the population, they're paying less impact fees. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. All right, I'll close the public hearing. We have one more?
Hi, Roy Todd, resident and business owner here in Los Manos. Really, my brother's side of our enterprise is a developer. And so I can, you know, I can relate a little bit to it, but I'm not super involved with that piece of it. I'm more on the operations and retail side of things. But my question would be, what prompted this raise in the, in the, basically the tax, right? Or the fees? Is it some kind of a shortfall that happened? We all know inflation is there, and then housing prices is doing that. And it would be, it'd be even greater if the interest rates were much lower. And so, so I just was curious as to what prompted this. Is it a shortfall somewhere else? Is it something tied to the budget, to where now it's, now it's causing a budget shortfall, and now we need to backfill it? And if there's any surplus somewhere else, could you backfill it from one of those places that turn the budget? That's all.
So the NEXUS, the Development Impact Fee Study dictates that the city is to adjust per the Construction Cost Index annually in April. So it outlines how it's to do that. And the purpose of that is so that when the city is ready to build that infrastructure, the impact is not subsidized by the city, and so that the city can keep up with the cost of construction. So those funds, it could be, for instance, we can use the police department. The police impact fee was used to help build the police department. New development was only required to pay a proportionate share of the cost of a new police department. But if we had not kept up with Construction Cost Index, we would never be able to build a police station. We would always be behind. So that's why it's important to keep up with the Construction Cost Index. And it's not due to a shortfall. It's to make sure we don't have a shortfall in the future.
Did that answer your question?
In a way, but I'd like a second bite at the apple.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, Mayor, this is a public hearing, and I just want to...
Sure.
All right. Back in the day, we increased the sales tax by half a percent. I had city employees calling me, saying, would you support it? And...
You know, my reply was, well, heck, you know, I changed the registers and the pumps around, and I add the half percent. I go, I guess I'm supporting it. I get to pay people to collect the tax, right, out of my pocket. Don't get any benefit out of it. I don't get to mark up the tax, right? So I get to support all these things, right? And so, if that's the case, then what did that half percent go to? I was told it was supposed to go to basically fire and police. Isn't that, isn't that the truth? Or am I, or am I missing something?
Two different pots of money. Yeah, totally different things.
The tax measure you're speaking of does not fund the entire police department in any way, shape, or form.
I'm not saying it's going to fund the entire police department. I was saying, I was saying that it was supposed to do something to help that cause and to put more police officers on the street, which is, which I couldn't... Huh? Okay, yeah, I get that. Okay, so it has, okay. But at the same time, and you kind of know this is a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, because somebody crossed me one day, and then I've never, I've never forgiven him for it, okay? Now, we have this banana flag ordinance that says you can't put one on your property as a business owner. And then I drive around here. It's not very hard. I can, I can sit there and let you write tickets all day.
We gotta stick to the impact fee.
All right, well, so, so what I'm saying is, you know, they'll, they'll sit there and bring a police officer over to my place, and they sit there and watch like I'm a damn criminal or something like that, as I pick the sign out of the ground, walk over to the dumpster, and he's watching me like this, you know, like I did something wrong.
That's a...
All right, so...
Completely separate.
So if we're going to spend money on something, let's fix the problem, right? And so all I'm asking is, what was that half percent for? Right?
So if I can answer, so as you may recall, in the beginning of the presentation, Development Impact Fees do not pay for operation and maintenance of capital facilities or city staffing costs, so that absent sales tax actually helps where Development Impact Fees cannot touch. So the Development Impact Fees can build the facility, but they can't operate the facility or staff it. So that's why that half-cent sales tax was so important to the city. Now, new development pays this, and it is paid at the impact of that new development. So it's at the impact of that house. That additional house is adding impact to our fire, our police, our water, our sewer, our parks. So it's that impact to the city that this is what this fee is for.
But I get, I get that part. Okay. All right. You know, when I guess, when I get somebody that comes on, you know, all this stuff gets back to the homeless thing. And when I get somebody comes up there and spits in my face because he's attacking a young child, and then I can't get a cop out there, and then I'm the one that winds up running the guy off the property, because, not to look in the rearview mirror or the past, but, you know, they told me, the mayor told me, Roy, that's not, that's not your job. You need to get the police out there and do that. You shouldn't be doing that. I said, well, you got to do what you got to do. I saw a kid that was in trouble, and I got between everything, and the person's, and the kid's dad was pulling a knife, and I got between all of it, and I run him off the property. I can't get somebody to get out there and help me. And then I'm, you know, and so the next thing, and now I got the guy folding his arms while I'm throwing a banana flag in a dumpster. And I, you can go right down J Street when you leave here, or I Street when you leave here, and you could see one that's up right now.
All right, thank you.
Well, now I have questions. Actually, just for clarification, and thank you, by the way, because you do all the kinds of really cool, good math. That is awesome. And on that, I want to ask, so, when we do these, these fees, the impact fees on these houses, on these buildings, and the money right now primarily goes to infrastructure needs, foreseeable stuff that we're going to need, that the impact that this house is going to have upon our community, what percentage of the impact does that fee actually cover of that house? So is it something that you worked on and say, hey, we built a house, we're charging this $30,000, whatever, for a house? That actually is what's covering it for the life of that house? Or how much does it miss that mark by?
That's a really good question.
So when we did the NEXUS study, there's a, there's a percentage they go through, and there's a traffic study that's done for traffic impact. There, on the facilities side of things, it looks at objectives and the capital plans and general plans and master plans of the city. So within that, then, it applies a percentage for each type of facility that is being funded through these impacts. So in, I'm looking, in fact, I'm going through traffic impact right now, because that's one of the things that we're working on for budget. The, the traffic impact on the latest NEXUS is 29.84%. So, for instance, where we widen or put in an intersection, the new construction is only paying for 29.84% of that. The city then comes up with the other percentage, whether that be through grant funding, you know, general revenues, those types of things. And so each facility that an impact is charged through this NEXUS process has a different percentage of application. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. That being said, though, then, obviously, one could do the math and say, okay, here's what's going to happen. If I put a single residential in this part of town, it's going to have an impact of this much over the next 20 years, or the life of that facility being there. Or if I put an industrial building here, or it's going to cause this kind of impact, so on and so forth. That being said, I am sure the city has used some kind of a measure. So there's an algorithm, there's probably numerous algorithms.
Right.
Is there one in particular that the city has chosen, say, this is what we go with, and why have we chosen that one?
So let's, let's take traffic, for instance. So you would look at where this development is, and then you would look at the intersections that are currently there, and what kind of traffic would be coming out of that and impacting several different traffic intersections, right? So then, those, those areas have been identified, back in, when this NEXUS was done, it takes population, population growth, all of these things, and it factors those things in. So as far as algorithmically, the consultants that did this looked at all these things. And in fact, we're going through several different traffic, now, just using traffic, because that's the one that is currently a project of mine. There's, there's a variety of different things that are changing, and changing with the state in terms of how they, they're determining traffic impact and these things. Now, the school side of things and the school fees, that is, that is the school district. So the, the impact fees relating to this are specific to the facilities relating to municipal operation, not operations, municipal facilities. As Stacy said, there's, there's no operations attached to this, no maintenance of this. And in fact, if we go and we are going to improve something based upon the, like a park, for instance, the impact of the, of the population, that has to be improved to a standard relating to the impact of what has happened. So, not, not telling you exactly what that algorithm looks like, or the calculus, or whatever you're asking, but, but they do come up with a percentage of what the current growth of population per household will impact certain areas of infrastructure. So whether that be the sewer systems, the water systems, the park systems, the police facility systems, the fire facility systems, the community systems, whether that be civic, civic governments' facilities. But again, these fees are not for the purpose of bringing something back up to standard. That is, that is not what these impact, it's the actual impact. So new development doesn't pay to pay for a dilapidated facility.
No, it's what it's going to have an impact on the deal. So that leads back to the original question I had. Do we have any idea what percentage of the impact these fees actually cover for?
Yes, there's a next, there's an actual NEXUS study that, that shows what, what those are.
And do we know what that is?
Yes. We, we, well, it's a really long neck. I could, I mean, just on the traffic alone, there's, there's close to 50 different intersections. There's close to 50...
I'm looking for the summary. So let's say, I'm looking at a house, we charge $30,000. The impact of this house over the life of this house, say, 90 years, it's going to have an impact in our community of $100,000. How much, you know?
Well, that, that's what those fees are. Those fees are what that impact is.
No, I'm aware of what they are. I'm just asking if we know what that percentage is. And that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, it's about 30%.
No, that's awesome. Okay, that's what I...
Yeah. Well, that, I brought up the traffic one at 29.84. There's, there's some that are 12%. There's some that are 23%. But these are done through different facilities. So a traffic facility versus a water facility is totally different.
And everything changes it right now from a pandemic that no one saw coming to, whatever, zombie apocalypse.
Yeah, but our NEXUS study didn't incorporate. That was done prior to...
Fair enough, fair enough. So then, then the next thing I would ask is, I know we're doing this, and we're looking, okay, nobody likes increase in fees. I get that. And to be fair, land acquisition or property development, or even real estate, people, whatever it is, for the vast majority of them, they're not in it for the practice, you're in it for the profit. And there's nothing wrong with that. So the only reason, or the primary reason that a land acquisition or a developer or even a real estate agent would say, hey, I don't like these fees, is because, well, that hits my bottom line. It's less to do with actual population or consideration of our community, and more to do with what, how much money I get to take home at the end of the day, which is totally fair. We live in a capitalistic community, but let's be honest about what it is that we're doing here. And I'm sure that our council is aware of that. On that being said, if our inflation rate, like was brought up earlier, is already 3.5% a year, and we're only bringing this up, this is going to drop that, you know, that percentage down, and it's actually going to cost the city in the future to only bring it up that much. And I'm sure you guys have already discussed, okay, here's why we've brought it up this much. A lot of, this isn't some number you just pulled out randomly and decided to do over coffee, but...
It's different indexes.
Okay, yes, fair enough.
Yes, one's the Consumer Price Index, and the other one is the Construction.
So it's just construction?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
One more thing I wanted to say is that it has not really touched the developer's bottom line. We actually take that price directly to the home buyer, so the house price increases by that much, including our, our corporate financial metrics, gross margin, return on investment, return on cash, multiplied by that fee increase of 1.1%, going straight to the homeowner. So they're buying it. City of Bakersfield, they did a study that every $1,000 increase in the sale of a home directly prices out 700 families, not individuals, families. That's 2,500 if you do five a family. Individuals out of the market, just for a $1,000 increase. We charge a profit, like a profit on top of the increase. So by doing so, you're directly taking 700 families out of the market, being priced out of the market. And like I said, it's 37, they're paying 37 in just impact fees. They're paying $10 million on their Villages V. D.R. Horton is paying $4.5 million on our lots we bought from Stonefield. So I think it is excessive, especially when you compare it to Merced County, Merced City, which is in the same exact county, and it aligns with the Supreme Court ruling, unanimous from the Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court, specifically talking about California impact fees. So it is a tax on new development when we are trying to solve the housing crisis. We're not hurting it, so why should we be penalized? So by approving this measure, you just, you're pricing people out of the family, out of the market. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Louis. Actually, anyone else? Public forum. Sound like an auctioneer going once. Okay. All right, so we're going to close the public hearing. Now we're going to go to Councilmember Louis.
Thank you. I have a question, but before I ask my question, I do have a statement. This has been several years ago, and I think Stacy will remember this. We had, I believe it was a consortium that built a senior complex behind an ARCO station on Mercy Springs. And they came to us asking for impact fees to be waived, especially in regards to fire and police. And I wasn't in favor of that, because it is a senior complex, and seniors have high uses of ambulance services coming in to take them to the hospital for, for whatever their medical needs may be. And so I went back later on and talked to the fire chief at that time to find out what was the impact to our, our city as far as the firefighters going in on the initial run, and then ambulances showing up later. And it was, it was high. It was high because seniors have medical problems and they need to go to the hospital. So those, if we had set aside those impact fees, that would have been services that the city would have incurred and not been able to, to, for lack of words, be reimbursed or to offset. But the question that I have is, Stacy, with the statement about Merced paying, charging less impact fees than the city of Los Manos, are we aware of that? And if we are, do you know anything about that, and why it would be less versus where we, what we're charging?
So when we did our NEXUS study in 2019, we did study the communities around us, and we fell pretty in line with the communities around us. Now, we could be talking apples and oranges. It could be a development that has a development agreement that froze those fees for 20 years. You, you have to take it in context for which, for what it is. So we, we can't compare apples to apples unless we really dive in and see. But our NEXUS did evaluate where we landed. We studied all of the Central Valley, and then we also studied who was our competitors, which would be Morgan Hill, Hollister, and those communities off of the 101. So we did fall more middle line. I will say that Los Manos has a higher disposable income than Merced, than residents of the city of Merced, and that's because of our proximity to the Bay Area. And as this gentleman stated... And as this gentleman stated, you know, 40% is local, but 60% is coming from the Bay Area, and this is their affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
This is going to be for, so the current fee right now that they're paying per home is $32,961, correct?
Yes.
So after July 1st, per home, single-family homes, it's the 1.1, we're going to increase it to 33?
Yes.
Okay. So I, you know, and so I wasn't quite understanding that it's going to raise the home over $1,000 to put a different family group into it. I'm not understanding how that, when the impact fee is only going up $362. So I, you know, I mean, the proposed fee, I mean, inflation is terrible, I don't like to see, I mean, houses are high here, expensive, yeah, I understand that. So right now, and you know, most homes, there's three or four families living in homes, I understand that, but we got to think about our first responders and everybody that's going to take care of that area, you know, from here on out, just like Ms. Lewis was saying about the senior visiting home. So I think $362 for our first response, or for the impact fees, for the impact for that, I think right now, I think it's doable. And we'll, I mean, I think we just need to readdress it again when it comes around to next year to July 1st, again, like we did, you know, this year.
I do want to add, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that the other part of this equation of impact fees is school mitigation fees, so school impact fees, and those are very high. Los Banos School District does charge extremely high mitigation fees for our area. So that's what we hear from developers, is more on the school district side of fees than we hear we're in the middle of the pack when it comes to other cities, and how we rate against other cities, although you can't compare city to city because their needs are not the same as our needs. But the school district, they are mitigating so that they can build facilities, so that they can build schools, and that's because that new development has that direct impact. That new home brings impact of more students to our community, and that direct impact requires new facilities.
Yep.
All right, I'll speak firsthand to this, knowing, being in this industry, $300, $600, $1,000, $3,000, it doesn't stop a buyer from qualifying for a home. So even if you add on this cost to the home, it doesn't stop it. What stops it is when it's like a $25,000, $50,000, $100, $200,000 pitfall or shortfall on it. That's what prevents these buyers from being able to buy, or these prospective buyers at that point. So this alone is not going to, this 1.4% is not going to stop a buyer. It's really easy for a buyer to adjust their finances to qualify for that little extra percentage, just living in California alone, it's just you're seeing multi-generations living in households. It seems like that's been a new trend, you know, we have impacts to more people on a property, more impact to the streets, to the sidewalks, to first responders, and everything else. What's, you know, the biggest issue that we come across is, we do have a shortage of homes, we can't pump them out fast enough, we have interest rates that are, you know, prospectively high, but it's because our base price of our homes are high. So inflation just across the board has just caused everything to go up, and this is just one of many things that it's affecting it. So this alone, this increase alone will not solve the impact issues of Los Banos, because there's so many variables that can change it so quickly, but it will help mitigate potential foreseeable issues. So this is necessary, unfortunately.
I think it's a move in the wrong direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Sheets versus the County of El Dorado federal court case, you know, actually discusses as far as like what the impact fees are, and the fact that we do a rate study, and they are comparable, shows that we're nowhere near in any of that. So we wouldn't even be considered unconstitutional or anything like that. The other thing is, just as we talked about, what is the impact, right? That's what we're judging this on and basing it on, and so, you know, the homework's been done, we know what it is, I absolutely agree, it's not going to price somebody out of the market for anything like that. And again, we have the infrastructure need, it's not just you buy a house in Los Banos and you go, okay, great, I got a house, right? I mean, you want your toilet to flush, you want the cops to show up, you want your fire truck to be there. So there are fees that have to be associated with it, because that's the service that you provide when you move to a city. So I'm for it. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on Resolution Number 674, 6764, to approve the increase as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Let's move on to Item 8, Consideration Initiating Proposition 218 Process Advising Property Owners and Utility Customers of Proposed Water, Wastewater, and Solid Waste Rate Adjustment Beginning July 1, 2024, and Approve a Resolution Adopting a Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2324 As It Pertains to Expenditures. For this, we'll go to Finance Director Portillo.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, members of the public here. The item that I have here for you is the initiation of the Proposition 218 process, and this is, I will give you a little bit of background. What is the Prop 218? It's a voter initiative that was adopted back in 1996, and in essence, it establishes the procedures to update the fees for services like we have in here for you, water, sewer, solid waste. Excuse me. With the Proposition 218 procedures, they are set out to, and they're dictated, we need to conduct a public hearing in order to increase, or modify, or adopt any new fees. But it is initiated with a council approval, and that's where we are here today. We are asking for the approval to initiate this Proposition 218 process. Once we have this approval, we are mandated to advertise this, or notify the homeowners 45 days prior to this public hearing, and that will lead us to conduct the public hearing sometime in June, that will give us the 45 days in order for us to be able to have this in time to have rates adopted and in place by July 1, 2024. A little bit of history, the last time the City of Los Banos conducted a Prop 218 process was in 2019, and at that time, the city adopted rates for the next five years. So the rates that were adopted were effective July 1, 2019, all the way through July 1 of 2023, and they will be in effect until June 30 of 2024. In order for, and at that time, the methodology that it was used, it was to increase this rate by the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. There is a maximum amount that the city is not to exceed on this CPI increase for water and sewer and solid waste, and that was 3.5%. What we're proposing with this two, with this Prop 218 process is to bring this item to a public hearing in June of 2024, have the rates be effective for a five-year period, so it will go through June 30 of 2029. And we are also proposing that we use the same methodology that it's been used back in 2019, which is to increase this rate by CPI, also having that cap of 3.5% at most at any given year for the residents, our water customers. So today, our recommendation is that we approved the initiation of the Proposition 218 process of increasing water, wastewater, and solid waste rates by CPI not to exceed 3.5% annually as required by California Proposition 218, on the right to vote on taxes. And, Mr. Mayor, we are at the initiation step, so the first green box there, the approval of this item does not mean that the rates are going to be automatically increased, we have to hold a public hearing before that is, that will become effective. So the approval for this item is to approve, and for staff to go out and be able to notify the residents, and do proper notification of the intent to increase rates, according to the Prop 18 process 45 days before we conduct the public hearing. And that's the end of my presentation.
All right. Questions from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. On the first page under the summary, when it speaks to the various areas that it's going to, the costs will cover, you know, operation of water, wastewater, solid water, but in parentheses, it says garbage collection. Does that fall in this as well, or why is that there?
Well, it is solid waste rates. We have a contract with a hauler, and we have to pay for the services of solid waste from the contract that we have, and we also have a small piece of those street sweeping and everything that we're doing as far as the administratively, we are managing the solid waste functions.
Okay, I thought maybe it was, you know, the solid waste at the sewer plant, so I needed clarification on that.
No, this is our garbage collection system.
Okay, and on the impact fees, it says that to send out the mailers for notification, it's going to cost, there's $15,000, I assume, in the enterprise fund? Is that all that we have left to do this? And that's what we budgeted for last year?
We are asking that, well, we are estimating that $15,000 it's going to cost, the notification of the mailing out the notices to our residents.
Right, so that's what's left in the fund to do this, because you're asking tonight for an additional $5,000 to cover the expenditures. So is it total $15,000, or is it $20,000?
It's $15,000, and we are, we are, we're saying that each fund will be paying $5,000.
Okay, all right. The other thing is, when you have the public hearing, if you could just touch bases a bit on, I read in here about the protest letters and how that happens?
Absolutely. Within the notices, we have, it is a mandate that we include instructions to the residents on how to submit a protest ballot in the event that the resident does not agree with the rate increase, they will have a venue to do, to inform, and to make sure that they're heard. So we are including that, and as part of our attachment in this item, we have a draft of the Proposition 218 notification that will be mailed out to the residents, and in the first section of this notification, we provide instructions to our customers on how to submit a protest vote.
Okay, and what is the number of votes that you have to get back in order for this fee not to go through?
It would be majority. We have about 13,400 accounts, so it will be.
That plus?
Plus one.
Correct. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, look for a motion? Councilmember Gogner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6765, as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to Item 9, Appointment of Commissioners to the Following Commissions. 9A, Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, we have one vacancy with one unexpired term expiring December 31, 2025. And the applicant is Doug Young. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonier?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Item 10, Cancellation of Regular City Council Meeting is Scheduled for Wednesday, May 1, 2024 Due to the May Day Fair. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And then, Item 11, Advisement of Public Notices, we have one report for Community Economic Development Director, Suzanne.
So we have a mobile food vendor truck, this is for Pacheco Pass Food Truck, to be located at 401 West Pacheco Boulevard. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 24, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Item 12, City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. First, I'd like to give my personal condolences, and on behalf of the city, our condolences for the passing of our former Fire Chief, Tim Marison, at his event today, and so our condolences and my condolences to the family, and to Tim for his service of the city, and it was a lot of work that got put together by various agencies, our local fire department, other cities that came in and helped out, the county, Merced, everybody else, so I just personally just want to say thank you to everybody that helped us out, put on that event, for his family, and that ceremony for him, to assist us, so our team can attend that ceremony. So thank you, folks, for that. The other one I'd like to mention is, the last couple weeks, team was out there painting all the sidewalks, the lines, the striping, all down downtown, so if you had a chance to go drive by downtown, you can see they're hard at work, so thank you to the streets team, folks that are out there doing all that hard work, really appreciate it, it looks really good, so thank you for that. The other one is, since our last council meeting, we had two microchipping events that were done at the community center, first time we've done them, and so it was a really exciting event. We had over, at the first event, I think nearly about 200 animals, and the second event, which was last Saturday, about like 150-plus animals that got microchipped, it was all at no cost to them, so it was a really, really exciting event that we got done, and I just want to give a big thank you, once again, to the code enforcement team led by Sergeant Ivan Mendez, and all the code enforcement officers that worked for him there at the police department, and at our shelter, and also a big thank you to the volunteers, for the folks that were there to help us out and assist. So thank you very much, very exciting event, and look forward to doing more good things for the animal shelter. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item 12, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, Measure V Committee, and San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And we will start with Councilmember Lewis, with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution. All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones? All right, I will be attending the MCAG meeting tomorrow, so I don't have an update on that yet. PCE is at the, toward the end of this month, so I'll be attending that. Also, I know we don't have a meeting on May 1, and so I'll report everything back after that time. So move on to Item 14, City Council Member Reports. Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I want to just make the public aware that, like our Finance Director stated earlier on Item 8A, this is just to start the process of public notice for public input. This is not a pass, or it's not a, also, I want to reach out, I didn't hear anybody come up to the stand today, but I'll put it out there for the downtown and the chamber that. and the chamber, that this weekend is actually the Spring Street Fair this Saturday. So I hope to see a lot of people out there at the Spring Street Fair. Other than that, thank the Department of Heads for a great presentation today. There's just a lot going on. And, you know, it's, like you said, it's tough up here because we have to put up with a lot of, not really, a lot of accusations. Like I said last week, you know, they want, I have all my licenses right here. You could have come and come looked at them right now. If he wants to pull them, I got them right here. If he wants to come see me, he can come get them right here. My business was open for visit, it's never been closed down, except for just a remodel part of it. Other than that, you know, all we can do is just keep moving forward. I like, you know, we were talking about the legacy. You know, I like moving to other people's, you know, we're putting one through from previous council and mayor. I like seeing this archway. I think it's going to be great for our city. But it is just one step forward on some of the things that are, that are, we just have to nibble at them as we go. I did want to point out one other thing real fast, and I'll get off here because I know it's short. Because it didn't get pulled from the item or from the consent agenda, but we did have it here. That our investment balances as of March 31st. And I guess we've actually increased by 5.2% just in this last quarter, or last quarter. All right, okay, so it's 4.0%. Two million dollars in the last quarter. So we're not, we're not in the hole. We're not, we're actually increasing money. So I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
No report.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the developer that came forward earlier to talk about Ranford Park parking lot. We know that there's some issues now with the parking lot, and thank you for bringing it forward. That will end up fixing the parking lot that you built. The other thing is too, is you stated that you're doing a annexation retraction on Pioneer Ridge, which that's some great news. So thank you on that too as well. Another thing on the side that I've kind of noticed is, it seems like the individuals that seem to do the most complaining are usually doing the least amount to help to get involved on some levels. There's some complaints I feel that are very legitimate, especially when it comes to homeless, cleanliness, things like that. Those are all valid. But it also seems that a lot of people have a backseat view when they claim to know everything that's going on. So it's just something that I've kind of noticed over the last few months that seems to be kind of a recurring habit. So that's all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Few things, I have a few things here. First of all, I'd like to state that on April 6, the Red Cross, sponsored with our Los Banos Fire Department, and also our Cal Fire Department participated in installing smoke detectors in homes of residents who made requests. Remember, this is something that we did just prior to COVID. It's a really good event for our citizens in Los Banos. A lot of homes that were built some thirty-plus years ago had electrically wired-in smoke detectors, which have gone out, or the ones that they had installed previously from purchases were all non-operative. The ones we installed had a ten-year life. And so now those residents who made the requests are feeling a bit safe. The law has changed quite a bit since those houses were built, and I believe it includes every bedroom that has to have a smoke alarm in it now and one in a hallway. So thank you, Chief, for allowing your staff to participate. And we had a lot of volunteers from the community, high school students, some students in college, a couple of students that want to be police officers, they were talking about that. So we had a myriad of people there to help out. And it was done much quicker this time than it was when I participated in it before COVID. We didn't have as many volunteers and it took all day to get it done. This time, it took just about a half a day to get done. So it was a wonderful event. I'd also like to make mention of our former Fire Chief, Tim Marison. His memorial service was today. It was really a wonderful service. Large turnout from the community of people to come and honor him. And, you know, just want to share with you, Chief Tualla, thank you for your staff who put this together to honor the Fire Chief. And, you know, I know that you're grateful for all the supporting fire departments who showed up to come and honor him as well. It was just a beautiful memorial service, and I'm very grateful and thankful that we have had the Fire Chief as our chief here in Los Banos in the time that he served. There were quite, there were quite a few stories told about him that were entertaining and how he got to that point and some of the things that he did in life. But what a great man. On September 20th, our Fire Department is sponsoring Autism Meet and Greet at Fire Station 1. So, did I say March? I'm sorry. I said September, didn't I? I'm sorry. Okay. It is April, right? So, yeah, we'll get that. I'm in a different space right now. So, yes, April 20th. So that will be another event to come out to. It's another community event where our children who have autism come out and have a low-impact time to be able to see the fire engines, speak to the firefighters, and do other things that help them be engaged in the community. And then once again, the National Day of Prayer on May 2 at noon. Everybody, please come. Our country needs a lot of prayer right now. Just a little, you know, I know there was some concern about our Sheriff's Department tonight and the shortage of staff there, and certainly Warnke is in need of new deputies because they are being depleted going other places. But that's not the charge of MCAG. That's the charge of the Board of Supervisors. They're the ones that approve the budget and make the decision as to how much money they're going to spend on their services to the public. And that, as well as us, is one of their number-one charges, is public safety. So if you guys have concern out there, for those who are listening on the air now or look at this meeting later, contact your Board of Supervisor who represents you and find out why they're not supporting Sheriff Warnke to be able to hire more deputy sheriffs for the County of Merced. I have two requests for an update, Mayor. And one is, can we have a report out as to what is happening with the opening of the road on Mercy Springs in DeAnza? And how quickly can we get to the point of correcting that so the residents are not having to go all the way around to get into their neighborhood? The other one, the other request I'd like to make is roughly about a year ago, we hired an organization to do an investigation on whether or not the proper amount of transit taxes were being paid by our hotels and motels here in town. And I'd like to have a report out on the findings of what that investigation was. We know what the cost of it was, that we were charged. But I'd certainly like to know whether or not what we paid in costs versus collection or if there was anything collected.
Are you talking about the TOT?
The TOT, the transit, yeah. The occupancy transit tax, yes. So those are the two requests that I'd like to see come back to council from our staff for a report out. Thank you.
All right. So I'll go last. So if you don't know, this week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I know that when people call 911, it's usually not to say something good on the phone. It's not to say like, you know, happy birthday or I miss you. But this is the week that we honor our dispatchers. They work so hard 24/7. As a matter of fact, one of our dispatchers today was awarded Dispatcher of the Year at a Merced County event for the third consecutive year. So I want to congratulate Liz Martinez for doing an outstanding job and being awarded that today. I also attended the funeral today of Tim with Councilmember Lewis. And again, the turnout was huge. Thank you, Chief, for putting that together. And I know the allied agency Fresno, Turlock, and Merced, and that was great for them to put that together. You know, some of the questions and things that have come up here is, and I have the same question that Councilmember Lewis has, I made a call just before this meeting tonight to Mr. Greg Hostetler because I want to know why that street's not open. I want to know what we can do to get it open. And I know we can do it. I know it's achievable. We just need to have a conversation and figure it out. I know that our city attorney and his attorney are having discussions, and that's what lawyers do. And so that's not my role in this, but my role is to answer to the public. And so whatever we need to do to either expedite that process or get it figured out, let's figure it out. So I asked for a meeting with him on Monday, hoping to get a response regarding that. So again, I have something to report to you because that's what I want to do, is to get that done. And again, I know this is achievable. When people bought homes in that neighborhood, that's what they expected. They expected an open road and a park. And so how do we got to get that done? One thing, and again, and I know this would just be for future discussion, is if we create policies and list expectations, what happens when we partner with a developer or somebody who doesn't meet those expectations but then wants to do more projects? What are we doing? What sort of precedence are we setting there, right? So I'd like to things be completed, completely completed, before we move on to other projects. And I think that's just something that's a standard that we kind of need to set. So I know that may be an internal staff discussion to have at a later time. I will not be at the second meeting in May. I will be in Washington, DC. I attended the One Voice program last year, and I'm looking forward to do it again. Last year, I kind of got my feet wet, and we had quite a few, a couple dozen meetings. And I got to voice my concerns about Los Banos, things like public safety, the airport, fire department, homeless. And so this time, now that my feet are a little bit more wet, I get to be a little louder. So I'm hoping to book quite a few meetings and really get in the ear of our federal constituents there so we can get some things done. Other than that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Lambert? All those in favor? All right, all right, meeting adjourned, 8:17.